We'll now call this regular workshop meeting of the Jacksonville City Council to order. Council, we have a proposed agenda for tonight's meeting. I would entertain a motion to adopt with the change of that agenda item number three, under consent. There's been an edited version of the ordinance.
Most favorable for the agenda with the addition of the addendum for agenda item number three?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Next, we have the adoption of the minutes and consent items. And the minutes are from the April 19, 2022 regular meeting. I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. That takes us to our discussion topics for the evening. And we're going to begin with the Commerce Road improvements. Anthony Prince will be presenting this item.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. I want to spend just a few minutes of your time talking about a DOT project and opportunity that we have to potentially partner with them to make some improvements to Commerce Road. So before we get started with the why, I'd like to talk to you about what the project is. Just some context here. You can see that Marine Boulevard is right there where, right there below where it says Commerce Road. On the right-hand side, we've got the Piney Green Road area with Circle K and Carmax. Commerce Road, as you know, runs between Country Club Road, Western Boulevard, and then all the way over to this area where it ends right behind the Volkswagen dealership. So what we're hoping to do with Commerce, and again, this is a DOT project that was scored through prioritization and was funded, it's been underway for a while, is to extend Commerce Road from where it currently ends, actually, more precisely, from the intersection of Fairway Road over to Piney Green. As you can see on the screen there, it's basically a direct shot. So the question is, well, why? I think the main reason is, is because this project here was part of a larger strategy that the MPO came up with to help eliminate the need for an interchange at the intersection of Western Boulevard and Marine Boulevard. Many of you who were on the council at that time remember us talking about the impact of that interchange. It was over $100 million in 2008 dollars back then. It was going to have a huge footprint. It was going to take out a significant area of the commercial, significant amount of commercial area along the Western as well as the Marine Boulevard area. With that, too, the intent was to have controlled access for 2,000 to 3,000 feet in both directions from the interchange. And when I say interchange, it's a big intersection with all the ramps, the grade separation. So it's a very, it's a very large piece of infrastructure, very expensive as well. So not only was there going to be one at Marine and Western, but there is also going to be one at Piney Green and Marine as well. And the strategy that we came up with helped to distribute the traffic around the area with this project, as well as the Trade Street extension and the Jacksonville Parkway extension, so that we're not focusing the traffic on Marine Boulevard and having to build these two facilities. So in essence, we're working smarter and not harder with the dollars that we have for transportation investment out there. Another reason that we're interested is because it provided an alternate route to US-17. Right now, if an incident happens at the intersection of Piney Green and Marine, there are not a whole lot of alternative routes. And once this is completed, hopefully this project, when it's completed, it'll give us an alternative route to Marine Boulevard and Western Boulevard, all the way from Piney Green over to Country Club Road. At some point in the future, with private development, we would like to see that extended all the way over to Wolf Swamp Road as well. Improved access for development, there's no two ways about that. By doing this extension, we would improve the accessibility of that northern corridor along US-17 that we've talked about as an opportunity for economic development for Jacksonville. And it'll also complement private investment that's occurred in the area. Not only existing private investment, but private investment that is planned and committed for the future. So looking at that issue in particular, we've shifted our location to the east just a little bit here. You can see that instead of on the right, Piney Green is now on the left, and Wolf Swamp is on the right. So we're looking at the same general area, we've just shifted over a block, basically. With North Marine Town Center, the Baileys have installed the traffic signal that's out there today, where the Commerce Road extension would tie in. And they have also installed this, Alan, can you help me with the annotation? Thank you. So the signal is in now, as well as this section of Commerce Road. When the Toyota dealership was constructed, the Stevenses dedicated the right-of-way for this section of the Commerce extension that they plan to build at some point in the future. I also believe they have money set aside to do that. We convened a meeting with all the property owners along this quarter, it's probably, what, seven, eight years ago, and every single one of them agreed that this was the concept that we wanted to implement over the long term. So in reality, by having this private investment here that's already occurred and that's planning to occur, as well as what we're talking about with the Commerce Road extension, we will have an alternative route to US-17 from Wolf Swamp all the way over to Country Club Road. So that's, that's quite an accomplishment when you think about all of the development and the density that's in this area, providing that alternative secondary access. So looking at the roadway as it is today, this is a picture of the intersection of Fairway and Commerce. I'm sure that we've all seen this location at some point in time. Generally speaking, it's shoulder pavement, it's a shoulder section pavement with roadside ditches. It's got some curb and gutter in the area, mainly around the intersection itself. Looking back towards Western, you can see that there are pavement markings out there. So we've got a little bit wider of a cross-section, but it's still shoulder section with roadside Then you flip to the other side, okay? This is the other side of the Fairway intersection, and you're essentially looking east to where the new roadway would be constructed, and this is what you see. So in essence, this is really just basically a residential-type road cross-section. At best, it's about 20 feet in width, and you can see there's some pavement deterioration issues out there. It just doesn't get used much, okay? And it's mainly because it really, it doesn't go anywhere. It ends right there at the tree line at the end of, at the top of the screen. And then looking back from the tree line, you can see the intersection. And one thing to consider is, is that with the extension of Commerce over to Piney Green, there's no doubt that there's going to be an increased traffic load on this roadway. You know, and the question, one of the questions that we have to answer is, is this roadway cross-section going to accommodate the amount of vehicles that we feel are going to be on that road once the project is completed?
Mr. Prince, can you go back one slide, please?
Sure.
Okay. So if you keep going straight towards the woods where this road is going to come out on Piney Green, isn't there the Pentecostal Church that sits right there?
Yes. And I've got, I've got a slide here in just a second that I can point that out to you. So a bird's eye view, getting to that point, bird's eye view, existing Commerce looks like this, and again, it dead-ends right back here behind the Volkswagen dealership at the tree line. But once constructed, this is what it would look like.
Okay.
Okay? And I believe this is the, is that the church that you're referring to, ma'am?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Is there a house right there? What we're looking for is not, I think, people would.
There is a house right here. That house has been acquired by DOT.
Okay.
And we spent a lot of time working with that property owner through the process. They've been relocated.
Now, Country Club, is there going, there won't be a light there, I'm assuming, just a one-way? Or can they go left and right there?
It'll just be a standard T-intersection. So you'll come up to a stop sign, and you'll be able to go either direction that you choose. So this is the project in total. And before I mention to you that this would be a partnership if we choose to, to accept it, the reason that it would be a partnership is that the DOT scope of work is basically from the end of existing Commerce to the east. And if we choose, our section of the project would be existing Commerce to the west, including, as you can see over here, a good portion of the intersection. So looking at it from a cross-section perspective, the existing roadway today, it's about 20 feet, generously. So it does show some curb and gutter on here. That's basically just to represent what's around the intersection, but for the most part, it's a shoulder section pavement cross-section. And then after, very bottom there, this is what would be constructed if we were, if we chose to partner with DOT. This is what they plan to build on their section of the roadway regardless. So this is what we would consider a commercial-type collector street.
Mr. Prince, where that red light, can you, yes, so right directly across the street is Humphrey Heating and Air, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
This is the signal that ties in right back there where the new Papa John's is and the Circle K and, and all of that good stuff. And again, that's the roadway that's going to eventually extend all the way over to Wolf Swamp Road. Any questions about, another thing about the after is that it would be a multimodal roadway, so of course it'd have sidewalks on both sides. That meets minimum city standard. It'd be curb and gutter instead of roadside ditches, and all of the, all of the stormwater infrastructure would be piped and conveyed that way.
So are we going to have to acquire some right-of-way from the property owners that are on that little section there?
It's already been acquired, yes, sir.
You're just going to build it out? I mean, it's, because there's a lot of places that are a little close to the road there. You know, there are two buildings on that.
Particularly in this area right here, and here. And all of that has already been acquired by DOT and, and worked out with the property owners.
Talking about the stuff, we're talking about doing.
The old section. About down here.
You've got your arrow going left? Yeah, right there.
It's like a bodega down there?
Mm-hmm.
I think it's that far down.
It doesn't go far enough to really impact any of the buildings?
Yeah. I don't think.
So the footprint of the existing ditch is where the footprint of the road would be. So we're not really planning on going a whole lot further than that. And in fact, all of the utility, well, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't want to speak out of turn here, Wally, but the utilities in that area are mostly on the northern side. So as you move the roadway out, the utilities have to go out, and of course, on that side we have minimal conflict.
So that section roadway is going to be how wide? Is it? It's going to be expanded to 28 also, right?
So it'll be a 28-foot, it'll go from what we see here on the very top. That's basically what it looks like today.
Uniform all the way.
It'll be uniform all the way to the intersection over here at Fairway Drive. And the intent there was, of course, you know, if you're going to build this nice new road and then dump it out on a, really what's nothing more than a residential street, you know, type of street, that's going to create some issues, especially when we start to see increased traffic in this area.
What about the section from Fairway all the way down the western? Would that be eventual at some point?
Well, that's something that we're going to have to talk about and decide in the future. That's not a part of this project, but I'll tell you that we've had some redevelopment opportunities along Commerce, and one of the concerns with, with one development project in particular was the capacity of Commerce Road and some of the improvements that would need to be made in order to build what they wanted. So I don't think the council's ever made a decision on that in the past, but that's something we may want to talk about in the future.
How much distance is there between that light there at the new Commerce section and the one at Piney Green and Marine Boulevard?
I don't know the exact measurement, sir, but it's just enough.
Very far. I guess the traffic study's been done to see how that's going to work out as far as backing traffic up or whatever?
And in fact, the MPO funded that study many years ago because this, again, was something that was very high on our priority list so that we could get away from that big interchange at, at Western and Marine. So the, the traffic study that we did was for 30 years post-construction, and it showed that all of these intersections operated appropriately.
Might have to get some of those signs that say they don't block the intersection, right?
We need a lot of those throughout town, don't we?
Anthony, and those existing houses there on the, I'm going to call that the, the top side of the screen, will still access the roadway, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Now, I believe some of the driveways, the configuration has changed a little bit because, of course, the roadway is moving, but yes, all of those will have access to, to the street.
I figured it would, but I thought you, you're right. They're still going to go to that. We're not, they're not going any other, other way.
No, sir. One thing to point out here, too, a big part of the project is this stream crossing right here. So that's a, I think that's a double-barrel box culvert. I can't remember the size, but that's, that's one of the reasons why this roadway was never originally constructed in the first place, because it's cost prohibitive for a developer to do something like that.
What is the, well, I'm sure you're going to get to this, the anticipated?
The cost?
Data.
Oh, construction? Well, really, that's up to us. So where we are right now, the DOT's got what they call 95% plans, and they're ready to go to bid at any time, but the question is, what is the actual project going to be? And, and of course, that depends on what we decide today and maybe in a future day, a future meeting, as to what we want to partner with them, whether we do want to partner with them with what they designed, or whether we want to modify it, or whether we choose not to partner with them. So that would help to drive the timeline. If we were to say yes tonight, which I'm not sure that we're going to be prepared to do, they would very likely go immediately to bid and start construction this summer. This, this project is ready to go. And in fact, you know, it's, it's one thing, it's one of these, it's a project that we intended on briefing you prior on, but the, the issue was, is that it was put on hold because of the DOT funding issue, funding situation. And then all of a sudden, when they released the funding to start developing projects again, it kind of fell out on, out of the sky on us. So it went from basically nowhere to ready to construct in an extremely short period of time.
Do you have an estimate for what our?
Yes, sir. So the current estimate, and here's where the sticker shock comes in, total project is $3.4 million. Okay? Now that is, if we choose to partner with them on the cross-section I showed you, plus the section that DOT is obligated for, that's total project cost. The city portion of that would be 1.34 million, okay? Now, part of that is roadway construction, part of that is stormwater sidewalks, as well as utility relocation as well. The agreement that they have given to us, and of course, we're not asking you to consider signing that tonight, but the agreement that they have given us has, would allow us to repay this amount over three fiscal years. So rather than just outlaying that 1.34 at one time, we could potentially cash flow it. But still, that 1.34 has some sticker shock to it. Initially, several years ago before the project got put on hold, the estimate was $600,000. I felt a lot better, better about coming and talking to you about $600,000. But once the project got put back in gear and started moving quickly, it went from 1.1 to 1.3, and now, you know, it's moving towards 1.4. But this is their final estimate for the project and what they anticipate the cost will be. This includes construction as well as contingency.
Does that cover any changes in the utilities or whatever?
Mm-hmm. So if we break it down into its individual components and, and attribute it to different funding sources, the roadway construction piece of it, which would be the new pavement, the sidewalk, et cetera, is around $489,000. Water and sewer is around half a million, $550,000, and then stormwater around 300. So that gives you a general breakdown as to what all we're paying for with the project if we chose to move forward with it as designed.
Can you elaborate on the water and sewer?
The water and sewer, yes. So there's a portion of the, is it water and sewer? Yeah, Wally's better, better to answer this for you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. So we actually have gravity sewer, water line, and a force main along this section of Commerce Road, and all three would be impacted, which is why for such a short area, the cost is so significant. The force main actually comes from North Marine Town Center, and in order to do that, they will have to bypass pump, which is part of the cost. And then the gravity sewer has to be shifted, and the water has to be constructed. It's in a portion of the roadway now, and it'll actually move just outside.
The force main be dumping into the gravity sewer?
The force main actually ties in, it runs from a pump station that was constructed as part of a partnership between the Baileys and the other developers in that area and the city. And the force main actually runs all the way down behind Little Caesar's Pizza under Western Boulevard. So it is a fairly significant run, and we have to, the, the DOT's actually shifting it because of all of the drainage work. And partially, you know, the drainage work comes because right now there's roadside ditches. So they're tying in catch basins and curb and gutter catch basins and piping into roadside ditches and moving, moving that to the outfall, which is that big stream that Anthony talked about.
Will this be affected by the, where work with the sewers project that we have slated for 17 north down?
Yes, sir. This would be out of the scope of that project. That project, if you get through, when we get through all phases of that project, it'll pick up all the way down to Marine Boulevard, but it would stay on that side of Marine Boulevard. It would actually pick up North Side Pump Station, which is generally in the Empire area near Marine Boulevard. And so it would pick that pump station up, which kind of serves Foxhorn Village and the Walmart area. So it would pick up that side, but not this side. This pump station actually pumps directly to Bear's Pump Station, which is the one that we just recently rebuilt on Belfork Road. But the, again, the reason for the water and sewer being so high is the fact that it's literally gravity, water, and force main. And if we were to opt not to move forward with the section that we're talking about and just DOT tie-in their project, we would still bear some of this cost because of sewer that we have in the area that we would have, that would have to be relocated. And a large portion of that would be our responsibility.
About how much would that cost?
What I can tell you is the original estimate that we had in the CIP, the Capital Improvement Plan, when we put it in, I want to say it was four years ago, three years ago, was around 350,000. So a significant portion of the 550. And that was before it was planned to come all the way to West Fairway.
Doesn't this, doesn't this project have right-of-way acquired for us to upsize? Was it the water?
We have, we do have, as part of this project, all the way to Piney Green, we identify, we do, currently, let me start that over. Currently, our water comes down Commerce Road from Western Boulevard, and it's an eight-inch main that's been there since the, the 70s, I believe. We recognize that we need to upsize that main in the future, especially as development continues along Highway 17 to the north, and we've planned for that to be upsized to a 12-inch. DOT is not putting in that section of 12-inch as part of this project. However, they did leave us room outside of the roadway, outside of the curb and gutter, to be able to install that in the future so that it would be much cheaper to install. So it does provide us that opportunity to tie a 12-inch water main all the way from Western Boulevard to Piney Green Road and into North Marine Town Center. Currently, North Marine Town Center is a long dead end that actually comes from the other side of Highway 17.
So how we fund it?
This, this project, though, is important for allowing for future development along North 17, is that, is that what I'm hearing? Because it seems like a, it's an expensive project for such a short, short stretch of road. And you're not really going to get much benefit out of that short stretch as far as from a commercial standpoint, but?
But it is a key stone for the rest of it, I would say. So looking at revenue sources, and this is conceptual, okay? We, we don't have any real details to present to you tonight. Depending on the feedback that we get from you, we'll probably come back with a lot more detail and plan on how to fund it if we so choose. But, so some of the things that we're looking at here, we do, as Wally mentioned, we do have an existing CIP project. We also have some existing sidewalk funds available. Now, those sidewalk funds were planned to construct sidewalks on Gum Branch Road and in other places, but the good thing about it is, is that we've got DOT to commit to constructing a lot of those sidewalks, particularly the ones on Gum Branch. And if you recall, when we got the CARES money from FTA, we allocated about $800,000 to construct new sidewalks and ADA improvements and pedestrian safety accommodations in various areas. So even if we were to reallocate this to the project, we would still be implementing a lot of new sidewalk infrastructure in the future. There are projects for paving that have been completed but not yet closed out. We could look at residual funds for, from those, as well as stormwater projects in a similar situation. The strategy that we would bring to you, if you so choose, would only use fund balance as needed. That's kind of a last resort option, if necessary. We talked about the timeline. The timeline will float depending upon what we decide. So if we decide to move forward immediately, then it would start then. If we want to make changes, then it'd probably delay the timeline just a little bit. So let's talk about options. Option one, of course, is to move forward with the design and the cost as proposed. Option two would be to work with DOT to reduce the cost. It's something we certainly can do, but I don't want to give you the expectation of us being able to reduce the cost by 50, 60%. You know, if, if we want to make some improvements to Commerce Road, it's, it's still going to cost us a good sum of money. And if we go with number two, we'd probably be trimming around the edges of that 1.3 million as opposed to cutting it in half or by more. Third option, of course, is to decline and allow DOT to, to remove our section of the project and move forward with just the connection. So at this point, we'd really like to just get some feedback from you, can answer any other questions that you may have. The intent here is to hear what you're thinking so that we can prepare for, hopefully, future action.
May I give you a couple of thoughts? Once built, construction of this or the rest of Commerce is going to be very difficult, and it's going to have a negative impact. Let me start that again. Once the DOT section is built and traffic begins to work on it, to take the section from the end of the DOT project to Fairway, Fair?
Fairway.
Fairway. Basically, what you're going to do is start trafficking in an area and then take it out for another six or eight or 12 months. Second thing to think about is this, it's never going to be cheaper. It is not an inexpensive section. You heard the escalation prices a while ago. A couple of years ago, $600,000. I can tell you, every day, we are seeing the price of pipe, whether it's drainage pipe, ductile iron pipe, any other type pipe, it's going up. So at the end of the day, you're not solving the problem by doing this section as far as all of what needs to be done on Commerce. But you are at least taking what I'm going to consider the narrowest, worst section that once it's open is going to have on there, pick a number, three or 4,000 cars a day. Now, the other part is this, remember, the DOT is saying to you that they will fund our portion upfront and then allow you to pay it back over a three or four-year period. Would you go back to the timeline? We're in the budget FY '23. Probably, your first payment is going to be FY '24. Most likely, it's going to be FY '25, '26, and '27. If you also look at the numbers, and would you go back to the breakout of stormwater and so forth? If you take the, the funds, that water and sewer, you know, that's just, you know, most of that money, at least two-thirds of that money is already there. It's already budgeted. Stormwater, you have a fund balance right now of almost $1 million. So doing the water and sewer and the stormwater portion, from my perspective, that's the easy part. The other part is Powell Bill. We estimate that you have somewhere around $150,000 to $200,000 in sidewalk money that you had planned to spend on Gum Branch. But as Anthony told you, the DOT has now agreed to do that. So in general numbers, which is my life, you're probably looking at somewhere around $300,000 you have to come up with. You divide that by three years, simple math is, Mr. Thomas? 300,000 divided by three years, simple math is? Oh, okay. That wasn't the number I was thinking, sir, but that, that's a good number. The point I'm making is, if you get these projects down to what I call the monthly payment plan, you can see that something that's $1.3 million is reasonable. What I would ask you to do is authorize the staff tonight to bring back to you no later than next week, the actual funding plan. You can always reject it next week. The important thing was to at least get the topic before you tonight so that you can see what benefit is there. I would also encourage you to go out there. You know, just drive out there. You can see, and the question I'd like for you to ask yourself is this, if we don't build this section, what are we, what are we dealing with? You know, now, whatever you do, don't stand in the intersection and look back towards Commerce, because, I mean, towards the Western, because there, you're talking probably sometime in the future, pick a number, three or four million dollar project. But while you have this opportunity, I would encourage you to give it the thumbs up. But that's up to you. Is that a reasonable request to ask you to authorize the staff to finish the work on cost estimates and funding and bring it back next week?
Everybody good with that?
Yeah, very good.
Good, good. We have consensus there.
Okay.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
It's my understanding that several council members are not feeling very well tonight. So I'm going to give you two options. One is to simply have faith that Wally has put together a thin budget, and we can adjourn at 5:36. Or we will begin to go through these on a page-by-page basis. Do I hear a motion for the first option? I think Wally made the motion, and Gail seconded it, so we're, we're good, good to go. Just a quick reminder for the public, these are the portions of your budget which you have already completed. The March 22nd, March 29th, April the 5th. April 12th was canceled. April 19th was completed. April 26th was canceled. And it's hard to believe we are now in the month of May. We have three sessions that are still planned with potential adoption on June the 7th. Now, certainly, you could have another section, another session on the budget come the, you know, 25th of, of May. And obviously, you can postpone the adoption until later than June 7th. But again, you have to have it adopted by the end of June. What we would like to do this evening is spend a few minutes talking about, really, what I'm going to call the Wally Hansen side of city government. Practically everything you're going to see tonight has to do with things that are under the jurisdiction of Mr. Hansen. The only other things you're going to see are some things about the, what we call interdepartmental budgets. If you have your books, we're going to begin on page 125, which is Public Administration, Public Services Administration. I would ask for you to actually look at two budgets at the same time. That's page 126, which is the Public Works Administrative, Administration General Fund, and the next page over, which is the Utilities Administration Water and Sewer Fund. Why is that? These are really the same people. Wally and his staff are funded significantly out of two budgets. They do very little work for the General Fund. The vast majority of their work is out of the Water and Sewer Fund and a little bit out of stormwater. So if you look at page 126, you will see that in that, this budget covers 10% of Wally's time, 40% of the Public Services Assistant Director, that's Kerry Correll, and 30% of the Public Service Coordinator, that's Derek Hart. Now, if you turn to the next page, you'll see the rest of those people. So even though you have 1/8 of a person, or 8/10 of a person in one area, the next page, you have 1.9%. Now, I haven't quite figured out, we're still only at 2.7 people. We'll have to work that out.
Stormwater.
Stormwater. Thank you. Good answer. But really, when you look at these budgets, this is the administrative side of water and sewer, stormwater, and a little bit that the General Fund benefits from. At page 131, you get into engineering. And once again, engineering is broken actually into two budgets. So when you look at the Engineering General Fund and the next page, Engineering Water and Sewer Fund, one of the challenges that we have had is we are working without a civil engineer. We've had Mr. Michaud, Greg Michaud, for a long period of time. When Greg left us, we had Engineering Jason join us. But we've been without an engineer on staff now for over a year.
Over a year.
And we have advertised and advertised. Being in the engineering business in the past, I can tell you, you're not going to find an engineer anytime soon. As long as the marketplace, quote unquote, is busy, every private engineering company will hire whomever, and they will outpay you. You will not, my prediction is, you will not have a city engineer for at least another two or three years. I'd like to have Wally talk about how he is maneuvering around that, please.
Yes, sir. Some of the things that we're doing is using consultants where we have to. Unfortunately, for a municipality our size, there are things that when we submit, they require a PE. When we submit our permit renewals for water and sewer, or any modifications, those require a seal of a PE. When we submit even Powell Bill at the end of the year, if we've added even a tenth of a mile of street, then we have to have that sealed by an engineer. So in those events, we are using consultants. Many times, it's a local consultant like Tide Water. They do a lot for us. And then if we have difficulties in, you know, reviews that we have to do, you know, stormwater reviews or, or anything like that, we use, we have on-call engineers that we're able to use. We do a lot of studies, water and sewer studies. We use on-call engineers for those. But we try to minimize those or include those into projects so that it becomes a cost of the project. So that's kind of how we're moving, maneuvering. We do have an EI on staff, which is an engineering intern, who is working toward his PE. We're very excited about that. And we hope that that'll be an opportunity for us in the future.
The other point I would make is, some of the studies that we're currently hiring consultants for in water and sewer, even if you had an engineer, you'd still be hiring those consultants. So if you look at page, pardon me, if you look at page 137, you're now into the Facility Maintenance. The Facility Maintenance Division is responsible for everything you own in the way of structures. Now, obviously, they're not in, not responsible for roads and things like that. But if you look, we have 15 people in the proposed budget. One of the things, there are 170 city-owned facilities, including all HVAC units that are over 15 years old. Note number two, over the last five to 10 years, the city has added additional facilities, including New Fire Station Two, Center for Public Safety, Jacksonville Station, New Fire Station Four, Riverwalk Marina Pavilion to be added this coming year. I will tell you, you get an awfully good buy for these people. You will notice in the budget that this year they have 14, and the proposed budget is 15. Let me explain to you why. All of the work that we do on our generators, we're currently doing that, and I'm talking about the big generators for water and sewer and so forth. We're doing that by calling someone. We do not have anyone on staff who is actually capable of doing the necessary electrical work or repair work. However, if you look at the amount of money that we spend every year in calling people on call, it's actually more money than what you would pay a maintenance worker. So what we're asking is, in this budget, it will not actually cost you more money. It will actually save you money. We're actually recommending adding an employee here. It's the only additional employee in the entire budget other than the one we've talked about temporarily for the computer issue. But you will actually save money, assuming that we can find someone at the financial level, which would be in the mid-40s to upper $40,000. So that's the reason for that. But again, we believe you can get better service, and you can actually save money. If, on the other hand, we can't find somebody at that price range, then we will simply go back to the contracted service. You want to fill any of the gaps there?
The only thing I'd add there is, we have an on-call contract for all of our generators. And with that contract, all the, all the company does is come in and basically perform a service like you would in automobile. They change fluids and, you know, run diagnostic tests and those kind of things. That contract is $35,000 a year. So that would be a large offset if we dedicated somebody. And then, that doesn't include, just like if you take your car to be serviced, if they find something while they're doing an oil change, you pay extra. And in many cases, we have to wait for parts to come in, which means we get hit with a travel cost because that contractor is not in Jacksonville. So we think this would be a very good offset of what we're spending and have faster service. Yes, sir.
Completely replace all the contract work. City Hall, I'm sorry, go ahead, sir. Can you elaborate on that?
I don't know what specifically, but my guess would be that we bought equipment last year that we're not buying this year. We probably replaced a vehicle or a piece of equipment last year that we're not replacing this year.
City Hall Maintenance. You will notice on the funding that it is spread out through General Fund, Water and Sewer, Stormwater, Video, all of that. Why? Because this building houses many employees of different funds. You will also know that, as you have visited City Hall over the last several months, you have seen, once again, the tall cranes replacing the air conditioning units. City Hall is currently in Phase Four of the HVAC replacement project. Six rooftop units were replaced in FY '20. Five were replaced in '21. Six were replaced in '22. The fourth phase in '23 will replace six of the split units. Two units above Johnson Boulevard Conference Room, two units above New Bridge Conference Room, and two units above the reception desk area. So basically, the entire foyer out here, all of those units will be replaced. The good news is, once we have those, we will have replaced all of the air conditioning units in this building. So what's the bad news? You have 170 buildings. Now, not all of them are the same age, thank goodness. Center for Public Safety, Fire Station Two, those air conditioning units, amazingly enough, are now, what? Eight years old for the Center for Public Safety. Now, someone on the council is an air conditioning specialist. Let me look around and see, oh, yeah. Our representative from Ward Three. What's a typical life in a commercial setting?
You've already done pretty good.
Yep. So the good news is, we're replacing all of them here. The bad news is, the Center for Public Safety is coming up on eight years old. Fire Station Two is coming up on, I think, what, Ron, six years old? Five or six years old? And then, look at the Commons. Now, the other good news is, when you finish Jackham yet, it will at least be in Year One. But one of the things that Brian Neely has done, he has put on a replacement schedule so that we keep a steady number of air conditioning units every year. We're trying to stay away from the spike of suddenly, oh, we got eight to replace this year, and none the next year, and back and forth. That, that's not the way to budget. So. The other thing you will notice, we have one young lady who is responsible for this building. If you are around, you would actually see two. That is because the young lady who is going to take care, wherever Anthony went, of the Jacksonville Station, when it opens, she was employed some time ago because we kept expecting to open Jacksonville Station. She will be moving up there. Part of her salary was also paid by the CARES Act or the COVID money. So that, that's something good. I will also tell you, just so that the public knows, we have a policy in this building and in all city buildings that the employees are responsible for collecting their own recycling every week and putting that out for collection. We do not ask one of our sanitation people to come around to individual offices and to empty our recycling. Yes, they do come every day relative to garbage. But it's our responsibility as employees to do our part to hold down the cost. That's one of the things we do. In the Streets Division, there are a couple of things that I would like to remind the public. Council knows this very well. Not all the streets in the city belong to the city. The major thoroughfares belong to the DOT. Now, we have talked tonight a little bit about Commerce. But when you look at Hargit Street, Gum Branch, Johnson Boulevard, Henderson, Western Boulevard, Seventeen, 24, those are not city streets. It's amazing, almost every week, we get a call, or at least we did before Henderson was paved, someone calling and complaining about the condition of Henderson. I'm not sure why people aren't calling now and commending us for paving it. It would be nice. But you, as a city council, and we as a staff, are responsible for 165 miles of roads. And you can note that this year, Wally and them are just in the process of getting out paving. A question came up, I believe it was Councilmember Jackson asked, and we provided you with a list of streets that were in the paving project that we just had to reject. Wally, what's the status of rebidding that project?
It's out for advertisement now.
When do you expect the?
I don't, I don't have the date on me, but typically, we're about 30 days. So I would say within the next month, we'll have bids back and back before you for review.
And all of those same streets, we gave you a detailed list, all of those same streets will be in there. For the coming year, let's talk about. For the coming year, let's talk about your paving program. Powell Bill, you'll get approximately, you know, $1.8 million from Powell Bill this year. But not all of that's available for paving. Why? Because part of it is for maintenance. And that's why you actually have, you know, if you'll look on page 146, you will see street, Powell Bill, and non-Powell Bill. In the past, you saw two budgets, a Powell Bill budget for streets and a non-Powell Bill. It became very confusing as to how we would move the money back and forth because not all the workers stay in one of those two categories. So this year, we've combined it. For paving, we estimate you're going to have about $830,000 for new paving. And you're also going to have...
We have a million dollars from the SCIF grant that we received from Mr. Lozara to also pave and replace infrastructure.
So when you look at the long list of streets that you saw that's in the current bid, the question is, did that include the million dollars? No, the good news is, it didn't include the million dollars. So in this year's paving, you're going to have roughly $1.8 million. That is well over twice what you normally have for paving. Any questions in that area?
The only thing I'll add is that what we don't spend in maintenance actually rolls into a fund balance that we can use to supplement paving. So if we have $200,000 remaining at the end of the year from the maintenance budget, it actually rolls into a Powell Bill fund balance that we, if we budget 800,000, but the project comes in at a million, we have money available over the 830,000 to pay for that. So whatever doesn't get used in maintenance actually rolls for additional paving.
Stormwater budget on page 148 is totally funded by the rain tax. That's a term, I believe, Mayor, that you and a former council designated that as the rain tax. What is the rain tax? Well, it is what they call an equivalent residential unit. What is that? Years ago, when this was set up, there was a study to determine how much impervious surface was in a typical single-family home. Through that study, it was 2,850 square feet. Now, I will tell you, some communities, that number is much larger. In some communities, I've seen it as low as 2,200 square feet. But for a house, driveway, porches, whatever's impervious, that study identified 2,850 square feet equals one equivalent residential unit or ERU. For every ERU, we pay $5. So each of us at our house will pay $5. On the other hand, when you have a large commercial project come in, large parking lot, large building, they pay $5 per ERU. I want you to look at the revenue stream. Over the years, at the top of page 148, the revenues actual in FY '21 was 2.1 million. Today, it's 2.26 million. And I want you to remember, in that time period, there wasn't a lot of growth going on in Jacksonville. So I'm going to go back to the discussion that Anthony talked about a minute ago with commerce. If you take that money out, and currently you have about a $1 million balance in your uncommitted reserve fund for stormwater, it's not the general fund, the stormwater, 1 million. You can see that you're adding, and with the growth that we're going to see over the next year or two, it's going to continue significantly to increase. The other part is, your expenditures will go up and down. But where will they go up and down? In the capital projects. That's the area that's the easiest for you to control. Wally, you want to add anything there?
Yes, sir.
Water and sewer, non-departmental. This is really, you know, once again, remember you have a non-departmental in the general fund, a non-departmental in water and sewer. That's where what we call bills in common get paid. Let's talk about some of those bills. As we all know, we have portions of the city that are served by Anwassa. We have a great working relationship. I have to commend our two members who are on the Anwassa board for working to get a business relationship. In this budget, you are going to pay Anwassa, if you'll notice on page 153, the city will pay Anwassa approximately $391,000 in FY '22. And FY '23, we have budgeted $426,000. This reflects the 8% rate increase that Anwassa... I don't know, Mr. Bittner, have y'all actually adopted that? Or is that just proposed?
Proposed.
Okay. But we've built into this budget the assumption of an 8% rate increase, not on city customers, but on the Anwassa customers. I will also mention to you that through the leadership of Wally and Ron, we are very close to bringing you some interlocal agreements with Anwassa. That will result in certain portions of the city, such as Country Club and...
Sunset Acres.
I've been here 12 years, I can still never remember Sunset Acres. Coming into the city and becoming totally our customers. In exchange for that, we're talking to Anwassa about taking some areas that are out on 258, that are on city water, but will never be annexed into the city, and swapping the customer base. Gail and Sabrina have been very active in those negotiations. I would hope that before the end of the summer, we will have interlocal agreements with you and the Anwassa board so that we can make those transitions. Like to add anything on that?
Yes, sir. The other area that we're looking at is, Anwassa would really like us to take what is called the Donut Hole around the Center Street and White Street area because it's actually, Anwassa provides the service, but it's actually city water. And we have water in that area. So Anwassa has a main on one side, and we have a main on the other. And Anwassa buys the water from us. So they would like that to become part of their, or part of our service area.
One of the other areas where we're having very good cooperation is out on Blue Creek School Road.
Yes.
Recently, you had a satellite annexation for the apartment complex out there. We are buying wholesale water from Anwassa. They are on our sewer system. And we continue to see potential for additional growth the other side of the bypass in the city limits, of becoming part of the city limits. But that's the non-departmental. Utility Maintenance Division, these are basically our folks who are out there every day repairing and replacing. And I would remind us all, we are a city where almost every pipe is brand-new, except for those that were put in in the 40s, 50s, 60s, 70s, 80s, and 90s. All the rest of them are brand-new, right, Wally?
That's right.
So this is an area that, you know, you have 30 employees in this area. These people stay busy. They are the backbone of your system. Water supply. Every year, Mr. Bittner asks the same question. So, Mr. Bittner, what's the question that you always ask? And the answer is, yes, it is permitted in the Black Creek aquifer. That's what you always ask. And Wally, what's our withdrawal permit?
Currently, we're at 1 million gallons per day. We are working with the state to increase that to 2 million gallons a day. But we've run into two challenges. One is documenting all of our wells, which we went through an exercise where we pulled our wells, all of our Black Creek wells, camered them, documented them, and we have that information to provide to the state. And then the other is, in conversations with the state, we have to show a need for that water. So what happened up until about five years ago is, if you did not withdraw your full permitted amount, they allowed you to run basically an account balance. So we had essentially a checking account balance of water or a water balance with the state. And what the state told us is, as long as we have that balance there, that it is unlikely that they would permit us for additional capacity because we don't show a need for it. Well, with things that we've been doing at the plant in the last year, we've actually cut into some of that balance. So we're in conversations again with upping our permit capacity from 1 million gallons a day to 2 million gallons a day. And we have groundwater management associates, which is Dr. Spruill, that's supporting us in that effort.
And also, that resulted in net savings for us if we could increase that. Does it reduce some demand of chemicals and so forth at the water plant?
What we found is, the water plant does very well if you're running 2 to 3 million gallons a day. If you get much below that, then it doesn't operate as efficiently. It just seems to be kind of in the sweet spot for plant operations. But what it does do is allow us, from having to use more from the Castle Hain or be able to better manage what we use from the Castle Hain in managing growth for the future. Because that gives us another million gallons a day that we can grow in the Black Creek without having to put additional demand on the Castle Hain. And the big concern for putting additional demand on the Castle Hain, we have plenty of permitted capacity. The problem is, that is the sole aquifer that the base is in. And the base, if you look at them geographically, they're located closer to the ocean than we are, which means they're also located closer to the saltwater-freshwater interface in groundwater. So the concern is, the better that we manage our two aquifers, the more sustainable the base is with their one. And we actually have a regional group that includes Anwassa, the base, the city, and state permitting agencies that meet to manage the aquifers as sustainably as possible.
Two things I would also point out to you. Look on page 160 at the water tower leases. Now, what is that? If you look on top of our water tanks, you see a whole series of antennas. I can tell you, 12 years ago, we reevaluated all of our leases. We had leases that the city had approved for, if you pardon the bluntness, too long, 25 years, at too little, literally giving it away. Today, we manage those towers. We have built an array on top of every one of our water towers. People have asked us, why do we even keep the tower in Bryn Mawr? Well, it's not because it has any water in it. It's because it's making us money off of what? The cellphone industry. We generate $374,000. None of our leases are any longer more than seven years. Why? Look at the change in technology. You don't want to tie yourself into a fee schedule for 25 years. Operating like a business, we now have seven-year leases maximum. Derek Hart, who's one of Wally's employees, manages that. And we get, in most cases, $1,000 a month per station. And I can tell you, even that is a good deal. I will also tell you, most cities in this state are still giving that service away. So I'm going to commend Wally and John Carter, Ron. We're running it like a business. It's important to keep it running like a business. Every year, if you can create $374,000, yeah, it's still a $20 million water and sewer budget, but... Any other thoughts there?
What it does is offset the asset management for our water tanks. So the water tanks essentially pay for their own maintenance.
Waste water treatment. We'll cut through some of these pretty quickly. I do want to note this. On waste water treatment, we are adding in the CIP. If you remember the tour before William Brown left, one of the things that he talked about was the need to bury some of the piping system out there. In your CIP is $2 million, or is, are... There are $2 million in your CIP to bury water lines out there. That's going to help. If you'll notice on page 164, timber sales. We have struggled. The good news is, this year, we've already passed $150,000 in timber sales. Why? Because, number one, William Brown, he was a forester as well as a person who ran the wastewater plant. But we found the right harvester. It's not about the market. The market has always been there. The problem was, with all of the above-ground piping, the harvesters that were coming in there were doing more damage to our system than we were getting money back. But the good news is, we just passed the $150,000 mark. And that's the highest mark we've had probably in six years. We're doing everything we can to keep that harvester. That's why, again, the $2 million of burying pipe, it will bring you revenue off of the product. We are no longer doing any controlled burning out there. Seth Ward believes that herbiciding is the better way to do that. We have been very successful in cracking up some of the hardpan out there so that we are not nearly as, holding as much water. You will recall with Kevin O'Connor, now, there's a name from the past, Kevin O'Connor, he still calls about once a year from Virginia, I think it is, to check on us. But, you know, Kevin brought to our attention the issue of the pine trees. Y'all went out there and looked at it. We had a major study. Through all the management, we are holding down anything other than what I would call natural death. Now, natural death of things like bark beetles. NC State is an expert on bark beetles. Would you like to give them a 15-minute dissertation on what that does to pine trees?
Kills them.
That's 15 minutes worth right there. It kills them. But we're doing a good job out there. And I want you to see, the money is beginning to come back in. The other important thing to remember for the future is you've got debt. But the debt is getting paid off. Look at number two. Construction of the LTS was started during the early 90s, officially opened in January 98. The original cost was 50 million, 6 million capacity. Expansion, which expanded nearly to 9 million, was financed through bonds issued September '09 with a 20-year term. The good news is, there's eight years left. The same thing on your water plant. We are going to continue to have very high water and sewer rates until these plants get paid off. And every one of you will live that long. So look forward to, eight years from now will be, what, 2030? And you'll be able to see this debt come off. Sanitation Division. No fee changes, you know, y'all have talked about that. The one thing I would point out, this budget, we will pay the county $2.2 million to the landfill this year. City of Jacksonville continues to be the largest single customer. You know, that's not a surprise because most people have to pay a private utility. Sorry about that, a private utility for that. But including your commercial garbage, we will pay the county at $57 a ton, $2.2 million in this budget. Commercial collection, you've already established that no fee changes there other than your dumpster rentals did go up. Water quality division. You know, this is stormwater quality. And they do, we talked about the ERUs. There's really not much to that budget at all. Information technology, this is your IT budget. And you can see that on page 180, it is a shared revenue... it is a shared revenue source depending on how many employees or how many pieces of equipment go to each one. The good news is, we have signed the contract with Barry Dunn. Is that the name of the company? And we've also begun to work on the employee that's going, that we've talked to you about, who's going to be a, a, a employee for this year. Media services, you, I'll simply point out that we have a contract with the county. They pay us about $75,000 a year plus any unexpected expenses. And then Anwasa pays us a nominal amount. Part of that is because Anwasa is now meeting less frequently because I think they're doing an excellent job running it like a business, so. Health insurance, you've already covered that with a 1% premium. The fee schedule is in the back. There are very, very few changes. There are a few clarifications. If you have any questions on that, please contact Gail, and we can answer those questions directly. With that, you are now to the point of looking forward to next week. The next two weeks, our goal is to really talk with you about the competition that you're in for employees. Next week, we're going to spend a lot of time just introducing you to your employees. There's a section, it's actually called "Meet Your Employees." And you're going to see a lot of the things that you already know, and you're probably going to learn a few new things about it. At a point, on the 18th, we're going to be discussing with you compensation. We're going to be discussing with you the challenge of funding that compensation. And we're going to be asking you on the 18th to consider what do you want to do and how are you going to fund it. The next two meetings, next meeting is going to be educational. The following meeting is where a lot of difficult decisions are going to be made. Any questions about where we are? Gail, any follow-up comments? Wally? Now, I do want to take a minute to ask you to join me in a round of applause for our city attorney. So would you please? Mr. Carter, would you explain to them why we're recognizing you tonight?
I did nothing except bring about a million-dollar check down to City Hall today for the sale of the One Place land at the Commons. It is closed, it is new ownership, and money is in the bank, according to Gail.
He's going to stand and obey you. A little bit of quick history. A former council looked at, a former council looked at the proposition of buying property on the Commons. That went to a bond, a referendum, it was defeated. But the people at that time who were on council said, we're going to buy it anyway. And it cost some of them their seats on council. You will recall that the 223 acres, I believe it is, out there was purchased for about $465,000. Mr. Carter's just reported to you that we have sold eight acres for $1 million. Now, I recognize, what is that, from 1990 or something like that to today? 30 years, there's been inflation. 30 years, the value of property in Jacksonville has gone up. What are we going to do with the $1 million? When you bought the 400 acres, you borrowed from yourself $2.4 million from the general fund. The agreement was that as you sold property at the Commons, that money would go to pay back the $2.4 million. Or in your, in your budget every year, you would take part of the 4-cent fund, and you would repay yourself. So I'm very pleased, and you should be proud of the fact that tonight, you can go out and tell your voters, your constituents, that yes, six months ago, you spent $2.4 million. Tonight, that debt is now down to $1.4 million. And in your budget this year, in the CIP, or in the 4-cent rather, is money to continue to pay that down. Within three years, you will have fully paid back the general fund debt that gives you a phenomenal 20-year future for expanding recreation. And I'm going to tell you, I'm proud of you. Okay. With that, anything else from staff? Anything else from staff? I know, Mayor, you have a recognition you wanted to cover for a minute, so if we can pull that up on the screen.
We have any idea when, what is it, Piers is going to start construction?
Yes, sir. The Partnership for Children, I was in conversation today with Chief Yanara. He's not out there. My understanding is that within 30 days, they're going to be clearing the property and that they hope to have actual construction by the end of this year and occupy the facility in early 2024. So it's going to be a very nice addition out there.
We had the opportunity today to recognize Al Keys, who's been quite the asset for the City of Jacksonville, serving on several boards with, for us over many years. And the other, and one other thing I want to add there, that one of my favorite city councilwomen of all time, this is Fanny Coleman, is, you know, was his sister. And, you know, Al and his wife, Ozzy, Ozzy, they have done a lot for this city. And it's, it's with pride that I was able to present, well, I wasn't able to present it because I got stuck at the doctor's office, but Dr. Woodruff and Ron stood in for me. But I do, at this time, want to read the proclamation that was given to them. Whereas the City of Jacksonville would like to acknowledge and express its sincerest appreciation to Mr. Alfred Keys for more than 22 years of service to the City of Jacksonville. And whereas Mr. Keys served as chairman of the Beautification and Appearance Advisory Committee and the Trails and Greenways Committee, or Rails to Trails, as well as the Community Development Advisory Committee, he also served on the Board of Directors of Sturgeon City and was instrumental in the Sturgeon City park development. And whereas he is a founding member of Crime Stoppers and was influential in the early development of that program. And whereas Mr. Keys participated in numerous significant projects during his service with the city, such as Arbor Day programs at local schools, the annual Christmas tree lighting ceremony, landscaping of many of the city's gateways, memorial tree plantings, and countless other events. And whereas, he has been a significant participant in the development of Jacksonville. His dedication and outstanding efforts will enhance the lives of citizens of Jacksonville for many years to come. Now, therefore, I, Sammy Phillips, have the great honor of hereby proudly proclaiming, Tuesday, May 3rd, 2022, is Alfred Keys Day in the City of Jacksonville. And I encourage his family and friends to join with me in celebrating his accomplishments, his commitment to his community, and our good fortune to call him one of our own. A friend of the city, Alfred Keys.
Mayor, that concludes the items we have, sir.
Motion to adjourn. All those in favor, say "aye." All opposed?